Good afternoon. I'd like to call this special meeting to order, please. And welcome to all our guests here today. And I'll now ask the clerk to please call the row.
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Valvina Nguyen.
Here.
Stacy A.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, I ask for approval of this special agenda. Motion been made in second to approve special agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Lane, please.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. If you all wouldn't mind, a moment of silence in honor of the two deputy sheriff officers that we tragically lost last week. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Board, for joining us today. We are very pleased to have a focus on the public library and all that it does for our community. And I too want to say welcome to all the many guests that are here, many of which will be participating in the work this morning. So, thank you very much for making time out of what I know are very, very busy schedules for you to be here today.
Okay. I don't have anything special, but I know we've been, the Board's been very busy and we continue to go forward, but I won't belabor it any more. I ask for a report from the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. So, Board, we're ready for item A. And we ask that you accept a presentation on community feedback from an online survey and onsite meetings concerning possible renovations of main library and approve moving forward with future plans, as submitted by Mrs. Levers. Mrs. Levers.
Good afternoon, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon.
Board, Dr. Lane. My apologies for being tardy. Thank you for setting time to discuss library matters. This time, we are going to focus on the main library. And Mr. David Hanson will be the one to share the outcome. But I would like to, I thank all the supporters. Great to see you all. Appreciate that. But there's one person that I'd like just to say a few words on behalf of the community, and that is Ms. El Nora Jefferson. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Lever. Good afternoon to the Board of Directors, President Jones and Dr. Lane and everyone there. And I am not a seasoned presenter before this Board, so your patience and indulgence will be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. I was asked just to come as a member of the community and as a resident of Northeast Kansas City, Kansas, to express my sentiments and also the sentiments of people with whom I've spoken about the library, whether it's a renovation or it's a new building, which we hope it is a new building. So, here we go. First of all, I want to say that I believe that the library that we have here in Kansas City, Kansas, is the best in the nation. It's been my experience with that as well. And although I do not have school-aged children, I do have an opportunity to seek resources and information from the library, and I have never been disappointed. The ask in my presentation is that the Board approve the move to the next level that is necessary for the building of a new library. In talking with people, in my own assessment, building a new library was the overwhelming favorite. By whatever means necessary, these are the points that were brought up in the discussions. The community people with whom I spoke felt that the construction, the maintenance and vendor support services must include the member and families that the library serves. The building's construction should adhere to ADA compliance standards and incorporate visionary or universal lifestyle components that take into account the space and ease of all persons, their access and egress, not only to the library but within the library. And just having completed knee surgery, I can attest to that, that it was very difficult and the desire was lessened to go to the library, either to park in the back or in the front, because the access just was not there. So, that is a star, not only in my history but a star in people with whom I spoke. The other sentiment that rang loud and clear when I looked at the survey, I was pleasantly surprised to see that this is what was spoken to by the larger community, is a building's architecture should be a bold and visible statement of the service area's history and its significance. It should draw from the rich histories and legacies of the people who not only found it but who also migrated to Kansas City, Kansas, those diverse cultures whose posterity continues to reach the diversity so strongly represented in the service area. I think we'll see the same thing happen when the Department of Transportation works on the VODAC exchange, that there's some room and so forth for the cultural and history depiction of the people who live there. The other thing that came up was the cosmopolitan amenities requested, such as a coffee shop, food kiosk, maybe a boutique for the sale of auxiliary storage devices, headphones, pens and paper. The overarching thought, too, was revitalization of mind, spirit and body. And wow, that is just really important for the service area, and most particularly in the Northeast. There are those of us that are not jealous or envious of what's happened out West. That's great. You know, it's opportunity and opportunity was taken. But now, we feel that it is time for the Northeast to have its just do. And what a rich history exists there. Despite the, what some people call blight, some of us will rather change that adjective to opportunity. And there is nothing but opportunity that exists in the Northeast area, which is part of the service area. We want, we feel like the revitalization of mind, spirit and body would give hope, showcasing the rise of a phoenix by displaying the possibilities for retrofitting older homes, for displaying things that make sense for urban core renovations, showcasing the use of water retention and non-noxious vegetation that reduces and eliminates airborne moods and spores that keep asthma and other respiratory illnesses at a high level in their census tracts, showcasing air, water and land monitoring and reporting systems that exist right now that can be installed in neighborhoods. The study of brownfields, in fact, is coming Monday. We're fortunate, Kansas City, Kansas, is fortunate to have been selected as a site visit by a national team of National Park Service and EPA for just that, the study of renovation and reclamation of brownfields. And there are plenty of them in the Northeast, whether they're old cleaners and service stations and that type of thing. But everyone doesn't know that term. Everyone doesn't know what that means. And so, the library could be an attraction for that, the building of communities where people could go in and seek knowledge. People wanted an integrated community resource for programs and services. We have a lot of agencies and have a lot of programs. We have a lot of mission statements and so forth, but somehow, it's not all connected. We don't really know what others do. We don't even have a calendar that really speaks about when this meeting's held and what resources. So, we say that it's a possibility there for the library. Summer programs, we received a lot of calls, our organization received a lot of calls for summer programs, so an opportunity for summer programs to be showcased there. Someone told me about college degrees as well as GEDs for those people who perhaps started school, maybe like in Pittsburgh, but would need to go back and complete that college degree instead of the travel and time to be able to have some kind of online and remote services so that we'd be able to do that. I saw a great presentation of that when Google came to town. In fact, it was right here in this room, and I was really impressed. When we had the showcase of the sister city in Beijing, China, I believe it was Beijing or someplace in China, it was just fantastic. And those are the types of things that I know that this library is capable of doing. This reduces the carbon footprint and the cost of furthering one's education. In 2022, 2023 would be the 150-year history of the Exodusters. And we all know the significance of Exodusters, bringing in their heritage, naming of junior book gardens and everything. A great opportunity for that to be showcased in the new library and the new building. We talked about a place for veteran coordination programs, because there is nothing like that that exists right now. A place where investors can hold meetings, political forums, and investors, I mean, those of us who pay that tax bill, man, that lovely. We are very challenged in the Northeast in where we can hold meetings, very challenged. And it would be great to have a public space where we can go in to do that. Recently, well, this morning, in fact, someone said, "A place for community healing for trauma and stressful situations, conflict resolution, how to improve relationships." We need a place to host those types of forums. A place for kids and young adults to learn, meet and socialize. More room where kids can have educational and all kinds of social and information services. Building community, that's what I see and others see in the sense of having a new library, a safe spot, a safe place for the things that are needed in this community to build it. When you think of what community means, what better place could there be other than a library? So, thank you so very much for allowing me to give my few words. And again, the ask is, is that the Board approves the move to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Hanson just to go through the process. Thanks.
Sure. Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Lane. We're going to take you through, you know, if I'm at the podium, we get to talk numbers. That's the one thing that we get to do when we do this. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the special focus before we get into other things today. It's about the main library and the things that we've really been working on. And the process to date, there have been sort of three rounds. There were three initial meetings. We came and shared some things. The Board asked for more community feedback. We went back and got more community feedback. We'll talk a little bit about that. We also completed an online survey so that we had 24/7 access for everybody in the community if they wanted to lodge some comments or to talk to us a little bit about what they wanted in a main library. And that was really good as well. One of the other things, just to note, we had Ms. Humphries and Mr. Brown, both were part of this process as well. You guys appointed them as a special subcommittee to sort of work through this process with us. And we've been very excited to have them give feedback at all, at a couple of the meetings as well. So, we're very excited about that. Let's talk about the first round of meetings. I know we kind of talked about this last time we met. This was really, we brought a group together. We were really focused on trying to determine, were we going to rebuild or renovate? Because this was an open question, and we looked at a lot of different things, had three different meetings. There were about 35 people who participated from across. There was a lot of civic leaders. There were some community folks. And if we recall, when we talked to you last time, this was really about rebuild. They came out with a consensus that they wanted to have a new building. Second round of meetings, and this is really one that I think came out, and we got some really cool pieces of, and that's a lot of the data we're going to share with you today. A key here is, we went ahead and mailed an invitation to every household in the main service area. Every household was mailed an invitation to come to one of the three meetings, and if they couldn't make one of the three meetings, they were encouraged to use that online resource as well. So, every single one of those households got that. The overview of that, we asked those questions, okay, if we're going to have a new library, what should it be focused to do? Because I think those are really good questions to ask. We wanted to rank what we currently do and make sure that we understood from the residents that were coming what they thought was really important. And then, we wanted to sort of talk about, if we talk about a new building, how do we want to couch it? I think that what you heard was revitalization was really a key part of what we wanted to do there. So, here's the first numbers. And this is where I really get excited, because I like, I love numbers. We, on the left-hand side, you can see the services that we identified. And I won't read them all, but there are the collections we have, the programs we do, the spaces we provide. Now, on the other side, the right-hand side of that list, is what we got back from that community. And there were 65 folks who attended those three over the course of time. And this is an amalgam of everything they ranked. So, we asked everybody to rank them 1 through 11. Now, the other, we'll talk about that a little bit. Not everybody put down another, and for a lot of people, other was 11. So, when we talk about other, just know that's going to skew to a bigger number, just because not everybody had another idea for us to do, not everybody had something to push. So, if they didn't put anything, we just gave that 11. All right? But you can see, collections were obviously something everybody cared about. That was a really cool thing. Computer access was something everybody cared about, and programming was really part of something that everybody cared about. So, we really took those kinds of numbers to being. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the other, because I think the other is important. It's a little bit harder to quantify, because of course, this is free-range narrative. And if you've ever done surveys, you know, when you get narratives back, you have to sort of sort through, is so-and-so, we're talking about what this person talked about, how do we put those together? And so, we kind of put the things together that we thought came up multiple times or we had great passion behind. And you can see the things that came up in the other that people really responded to, café of coffee shop or sometime, you know, I will tell you, it kind of depended on the person if they were looking at it as a coffee shop or looking at it as a café. I will tell you, that's probably dependent on whether or not you think of yourself as a café person or a coffee shop person. But caffeine was involved in all of those things.[971.13][971.13](Laughter). The other things that we thought were really important that got raised up were rooftop access. There was a lot of people who were interested in having the ability to go out on the rooftop. I think several libraries in the metro have a rooftop kind of thing. I think it has, you know, sort of outdoor urban spaces, something that they were interested in. Bathroom on the first floor. If you've been to the main library, I'm not going to spend too much time, because it's kind of gross, but the bathroom situation is obviously from 1950s, and that's something that we do. There's a lot of talk about indoor communal spaces. Now, there is a lot of different types of communal spaces. We had people who were looking for ways to walk inside, you know, and that kind of struck us until we realized, when it's 98 degrees and I want to walk, I might rather walk inside. So, it kind of made some sense after a while. There was certainly discussion about security and safety. The idea of making sure that this building was part of making that area a safe place for people to gather, you know, a place where people felt like they were secure and coming to. And so, that was something that we really talked about. And this retail nonprofit space, in the bigger analysis, I know that we shared, this went all over the place, from a WeWork situation all the way to shops on the sidewalk. So, I think there's a lot there to unpack. And there are a lot of really cool ideas that might be part of something going forward. The online survey, this was a really interesting deal. We had more participants in the online survey. I believe the final number was 77 folks filled out the online survey. Now, we gave them a chance to do a lot of different things, and I'll show you, we asked them some questions. The way to think about the online survey was, it was really amalgam between what we said before, that first group, and what we were doing with the second group. You can see the big numbers that I would have you take. We talked about the importance to the health of downtown was a very big number. Over 79% of folks thought it was really important who took the survey. We talked about the current use. That roughly translates to those rankings that we shared. You know, the books were 84%. I would just tell you, as a librarian, I can't tell you how much this heartens. And I just want to shout out to the school district, you know, they've been talking about reading a lot. And one of the things, I will tell you nationally, the levels of reading are not 85%. Now, I'm not saying 85% of everybody in Wyandotte County reads, but to see that number so high as being something that is important to the residents, I think is a testament to not just us but the entire community in what we're doing. Obviously, programming was about half. That's another one that I would call out. Movies, of course, are pretty popular as well. Central community space, very important. And I would just hold on to that in the context of what we talked about with that other. There were so many ideas about what to do with community space, but there's a clear sort of two-thirds of the folks in this particular group that were very interested in community space. There's a very interesting dynamic around that a library is a place where people gather. You know, we love the books number, but that is something I would hold on as well. And then, we asked them, what would you like us to focus on? And you can see, programming and events were really, really high. In fact, a little higher than books. I was kind of surprised. When you get 85% of people thinking books are really, really important, for it to come in second on what you should focus on, is kind of an interesting thing. I can't really explain it, other than that's what we kind of have. We did take a look at, and we combined everything we got, right? And we kind of came up with some, I think, shared understanding between all three of these things, right? The thing that I think stands out from the data set that we provide you with is, collections are really a priority for whatever we do going forward, is the community really does value those collections. And whether it's because we don't have bookstores down there and a lot, or what it is, they value those collections. They really value our programs and events. I know several of you have been to some of the cool events that we've done over the years. The community does very much value those things as well in all of those things. I think community space is a really important piece, and we've talked about it. I think this is sort of one of the great places of where the project has to go in terms of trying to define and figure out how we create that community space, because I don't know that I could, from the data that we have, give you a 100%, well, this is what they're talking about. We just know that there's a groundswell of desire for public space. So, those are really what we got back from the survey. And so, we'll take any questions that you might have in terms of the process, what we got out of it. And then, ultimately, I'd be remiss if I'd say, part of what you'll hear about in our budget talk is a little bit about how we might fund going forward and what next steps might be. But I think now is a chance for you guys to kind of talk and reflect on this and see what you guys think about the data and our community comment.
Well, I think the community, wanting the community space, because like you said, in the Northeast end, it is quite a challenge to find a community space where you can have a community meeting without trying to get to a church or somewhere else. But I liked the survey, and I liked the input and the number of people that put in. I thought it was quite impressive.
Just for clarity, how many households did you send the, what, notice? Or what did you send to the household?
It was a postcard. It was a postcard. I do not have the number of households in. I can only tell you, when we contracted with the mailer, it was an outside company. We said, "This is the parameter. Every single address gets a postcard."
Okay, so what's the parameters? What are the parameters?
The parameters, the main library service area runs from the north part of the county. It runs to the east part of the county. Basically, it runs on the south to 32, which would, that's where the southern, it's just a little south of 32. Voting districts and 32 don't quite match up. And then, on the west boundary, it is essentially 635. But the actual, when you get to those voting districts, or the voting districts, it's by voting district, but it is basically about, depending on where 635 is in the county, the biggest one is about two miles west of 635. So, it goes just to the other side of 635 in some parts, and because 635 is not a straight road, it doesn't, but roughly.
We understand.
Yeah, just to get your idea. It's 635 to 32 and then the Northeast.
Got it. Okay. I was happy to see the books rated so high.
So are we.
We also had them in the newspapers, but a lot of people responded to the postcard.
Yes. First of all, I want to applaud you both for keeping the community engaged in the decision-making process. I really enjoyed, and I thought it was very informational, the sessions that I attended. And you know, this is an opportunity for us, and the opportunity is being generated because of something I want you to address, and that is the existing library and how outdated it is and the cost, you know, the cost associated with retrofitting it to bring it up to standards. You were talking, I remember the loading dock for one, that was an issue. The piping is another issue. Air conditioning and the windows are another issue. And so, just, we're not just changing because we want to change. There is a good reason for wanting to do something a little differently. So, I wish you could address that particular issue.
Sure. We'll just spend a couple, a few brief moments on it. We always start when we talk about the insides of the main library this way. Nobody made a bad decision, all right? The main library, when it was built in the late 50s and I think completed in the early 60s, was built to state-of-the-art. So, we're not here to tell you, oh, ex-plumbing company really got this wrong. It's just that it's been so long that what you have today, you can achieve so much more with. So, the windows that are in most of that library were put in at a time when that was the window you used. That's not a very good window today. It doesn't have a lot of efficiency. It doesn't have a lot of insulation in it. It's just kind of the way they made those windows today. A host of the plumbing on the inside is original. And so, if we didn't have hard water in Wyandotte County, it might be a different thing, but we do. And what that kind of means is that over time, you're just going to have deposits. And again, that's a pretty normal, natural thing to happen. Nobody did anything wrong. It's just kind of what happens. It's like anything else. In dealing with facilities throughout my entire career, I will tell you, everything has a working life, right? There are days when I get out of bed, and I'm like, wow, that foot just maybe ran out of working life today. But that is just kind of what we're dealing with, is that this was really what we should have been doing in the 60s. There are some of the items that have been done that were really good in the 70s, but it is no longer those dates. And when we get to this point, sometimes it is better to spend the money and do the new stuff, because it's a lot easier to gain those efficiencies and the things that you want to do. A really easy way of talking about it is, no matter what we would do and how that building is structured, it is a structural thing where we have beams across the floors that hold up each floor, right? In order to not have beams hold up those floors, essentially to give you a big, wide-open space like what we enjoy in some of the other buildings, that is really costly.
Prohibitive.
Might not even be possible. But it is, that's just kind of what, those are the kinds of things just to take into consideration. It's just kind of, it's at the end of its working life. So, we do have pipes coming in from the BPU. There is, in the presentation, I think we showed, they burst. We had a water outage, and they have to dig down about eight, 10 feet down there. We replaced just about a six-foot deal. The pipes are not going to get any better down there. That's going to be a pretty big-ticket item at some point. And again, BPU didn't do anything wrong. I'm not here to make BPU a bad person. It's just, those pipes have been there a long time. And at some point, you have to put something else in place.
I thought the story was fascinating. You talked about the loading dock.
Oh, yeah. Well, the loading dock was back before we had palleted stuff. And so, we can bring a pallet eight feet into the library and it stops. And then, we have to undo the pallet. We have to put on smaller carts, and we have to take those carts in different elevators wherever we're going to put them. The elevator we have was a perfectly fine elevator when it was put in. It's essentially a passenger elevator. It's not really meant to do
Right.
the hard work of that kind of thing. So, it's, again, back in the day, this is how we held, this is what we did with material, right? Nobody was bringing these kinds of big things in. No one's bringing them out. Today, it's much better. It's much easier. It's much more efficient. It takes far less people if you're able to pallet things and move them where you need to move them.
During your presentation, you did talk today that this was about costs and what it's going to take to do this.
We, sure. We don't have specific costs. When the idea of cost got broke up, what we said was, look, the first thing, we understand this is going to be an expensive project. It is going to be more expensive than anything the library has attempted to do to date, because this is a little bit different project. The things that we wanted to make sure the community understood was, whereas when you compare it to sort of the South project that we did, they're not really the same, because the decision to keep the administrative offices and some of those other functions down there is going to impact what happens with that building, right? And so, when we talk about costs, we said, look, this isn't going to be the same type of project. It is likely going to be a much more expensive project. Part of what we have to go through now is getting with an architect to understand what is possible for these different dollar periods so that we can start understanding how we're going to guide that, how, obviously, the Board would be a huge part. for these different dollar periods so that we can start understanding how we're going to guide that, how, obviously, the board would be a huge part of that, how we would guide the scope of what we're going to try to attain there. And a lot of that comes down to, I go back to that one other. You know, we spent a lot of time talking about the other. Depending on what we decide, what the decision is made over what we want to achieve in a community space there on the Minnesota corridor, is going to have a huge impact on what the budget might have to look like. So I guess it's kind of long answer, yes, we say it's going to be more expensive. In general, the community, when we talked about the dollars in those meetings, they were like, well, they generally were sort of, we should pay for better. Now, obviously, no one has a dollar in front of them, so we don't know what better is yet. But I think that's the general sense we got from those meetings, was they were very interested in doing not just the minimum.
So Board, the next step, if you choose, is to direct the staff to engage an architect to begin with that scope. And the scope will determine the cost, and then that will determine the fundraising plan.
Well, when you were here before, when we were at a board, I thought we were at a board, you had architectural design.
Sure.
Apparently, you had showed it to the city. You showed us some of the designs that were out. So somebody else is going to do more additional work, what they did when they came to that particular meeting.
We did not show it to the city. We showed it to the board first.
Those, that particular project was, all those drawings were, was to get an idea of what a modern downtown library could do.
Could look like.
Not would do, but could do. And so, yeah.
I got the could do, but I also remember somebody saying that they had showed this to some of the people downtown. Maybe I misunderstood. I'm just asking for clarity.
No, the only folks that I think that have seen it would have been the architects who all donated time to work on that. And you folks and library staff and facility staff.
If I may, Ms. Brownlee Page, two years ago, or more than, three years ago, the board, the previous board, did a feasibility study and then asked, and we worked through that. So the last meetings we had was November of last year, December and of January. With, and at that time, we were asked to have a couple of, what do you call them, architects? So that at least we could have an idea of what it'll look like. That was what we brought to you at the time. But then we were asked to go back, so we went back again. But we did, the meeting with the UG, was this, the UG knew, because of the invitation that was sent out, that we wanted to either leave the area, build somewhere else, and they were worried. The library, the library on Minnesota Avenue is the only, I shouldn't say it's the only, but it's, you know, if the library leaves, then Minnesota kind of dies. And they were worried. They called us in for a meeting to make sure that, you know, they'll do anything in their power to support us. They would like the library to stay on Minnesota or at least downtown. So that was the meeting with them. We just went there because they invited us, but it wasn't because of the architectural rendition that we had. That was mainly, you guys were the first and only people to see that.
Do you have a proposed site?
We're working on that because we need to know what do, what's the board's, what would the board like us to do next?
I will tell you what the community told us was, they would prefer that we stay in and around the Minnesota area. They're not, there's not a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of energy around moving the library a big distance away. Part of it will, after scope, then you can figure out what can be accommodated where.
You know, based on what Ms. Brownlee Page noted, I remember the presentation you all gave us and the conversation that you had told us that you'd received from the UG. And so that leads me to ask a similar question as Mr. Brown. At that meeting, the discussion had broadened, broadened from essentially the entire block. So before, I would be prepared to answer what Dr. Lane said. I would need more clarity as far as, are you looking at your current pad? Are you looking at going in areas that we don't own? And that was the jest that I got from the meeting the last time we had because it wasn't a direct quote. But the UG had kind of said, you know, I give you the blessings. And you remember, we had the conversation, like, how could they give you the blessings? They don't own the library, nor do they own the surrounding, the next building. So that is my feed off of Ms. Brownlee Page. I mean, so give us some more, some more, I mean, we've got community input now.
Yeah.
But you, it's a little, okay, if that's enough, it's not enough for me to say, go forward. What are you going forward to do?
Sure. I think that the best way to think about it, and we're going to try to characterize those conversations around the idea that there are a lot of different folks who are very, very interested in the development of Minnesota Avenue. And I think the conversations that Carol ended up with, with the government entities, really is surrounded about how to realize that area, however that might be. So I think that there is, within the conversations that Carol had regarding some of those opportunities around the current library sitting, would be characterized as possibilities. And I think there's a lot of people who wanted to see what would look, because I think there are other groups as well who are going through the same thing. I think there's, within the community, there's a lot of discussion about some areas that are between the APA building, which has been announced, and where we sit on Minnesota Avenue. And I think they're having sort of some similar conversations. And so I think to characterize those discussions would best be that way in terms of, they were, there's a lot of interest on having something holistic done, having something that, I don't want to say managed by one person, because I don't think that's the way these things work. But I think that's kind of where those conversations went. And I think it's perfectly understandable to want a little more clarity on what the UG might have in mind and what their feelings are.
Yeah, I mean, partnerships are key. And I think, what I'm hearing you say is that there's an opportunity to partner with key developers, but key stakeholders who are right there.
And I think we get into, what do they call it, the old chicken and egg thing? And I don't know which one we are at this point. Because I think one of the things that everybody's going to be looking for is, okay, how serious are you about building the building? How serious are we about doing what we're going to do? So I think that's kind of, and an old saying that a coach of mine once said, you know, you can only control what you can control. And so I think it's absolutely a fair point, and we, Carol and I talk about this all the time, about what's going to happen with the other folks who might come to the project. And so we're primary focused at this point on how we can get our arms around what, regardless of what that space might look like, what a main library would, what it would have to do, so that we have a better sense of scope. Because it is always possible, you know, it is our absolute intent that we stay as close to where we are as possible. If the community, and we got back to, hey, this is what we need on the footprint, and nothing happened, then I think you can start entertaining, well, could we go a block away and get what we need or not? I think, you know, we certainly don't want to have to do that. But I think that's one of the things when you start down the path of what does a main library have to accomplish.
Can I just add one point, and Ms. Jefferson, full disclosure, we've been, we've known each other for like 100 years. Is the north, is this conversation happening in the discussion of the Northeast Master Plan? Last meeting I attended, it wasn't. But I haven't, but I know you had one recently or are going to have one soon.
So here's kind of the, there's kind of an overlap, and certainly you can talk about it. The Northeast Plan starts at state and goes north. The library sits at Minnesota. We went to the early Northeast planning meetings to sort of talk about what we might be able to help and achieve with. So in a Venn diagram situation, you think the Northeast is encompassed by the main library service area. The plan that they're kind of talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, I think starts at state and goes north. Am I right?
It does. But there are some overlapping, soft kind of relationships built into a library, a grocery store, those types of things. And now it relates to the Northeast Master Plan.
Right. Just had to bring it up because that's the environment we're in.
Mr. Hanson, so if we go forward with this and engage an architect, and they work on what the library may look like, and how much parking would be needed for the services that we want to provide, then we would have an idea about whether it would fit on the space that we have, or whether we need to look outside. It would give us a better idea of what we need facility-wise, land-wise, and money-wise.
Correct. Yep.
It's not going to be, they're not going to be able to say, it's only going to cost you this much, but they can give us an idea of what it would be.
So then, what I'm hearing at this point, we need to see if we, both to see if we get an architect to look at this.
I would move that we approve them to go forward with architectural plans.
Can I ask one more question? Are the architectural rendering, are those conceptual renderings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's not a, there's, they, it was kind of whatever they felt like they could do for free.
And I wanted to find out, are we, because of what I'm trying to hear is whether or not we are in an agreement that there should be a new one, and then follow the steps by going toward the information about the architect. Is this what I'm hearing from the board?
We haven't had the conversation about renovation. Did I miss the presentation?
What, the conversation, where we began with the community was, we asked that first group, are you interested in renovating this site? Because believe it or not, one of the things they talk about is historical significance of buildings. And we took that discussion very seriously. And so the first, first discussions we had with the first three groups was, look, this is what renovation is, this is what we're up against in renovation. These are what the building are, and certainly, Mr. Brown, kind of, that was the conversation we had about what's in the building and what would have to change. And from that group, really, they were pretty strong on, they felt the need for a new build was the better way to go. Now, they didn't really get into the idea, I mean, they talked about revitalization, they talked about some of these things. They didn't get into the specifics that the second group did. So the first, first group was all about, are we renovating or are we doing something else? And actually, that group gave us feedback on, do you move it? Do you, are there other places to go? Should it be located somewhere else? That group had a rollicking discussion about all of those factors. And so that is kind of why in the second group, we started talking about, okay, the first group kind of led us, the consensus was very much in favor of, we want to build new. Well, there's a whole bunch of different ways that you can build new, and there's a whole bunch of different concepts around that. So what is it that you, what is it that you care about? You know, when we went back to talk to them, what is it that you really care about that we need an architect to understand in a building program like this? So that's really where the second one is. That's, so the terms of, when we talked about renovation versus revitalization, or I always say revitalization because I think it's the most paid. But renovation kind of got set aside at the very, at the beginning groups, just because it did not seem to have as much energy or in the community around it.
So what I'm hearing is, we, and if I'm wrong, someone please correct me, that we agree that something has to be done with the library. The question is whether it's renovation or rebuilding. And I think it's important that we approve for this process to take place. And then from there, then we can get the other information that you all are suggesting in order for us to move forward. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Makes sense if they're clear on, it doesn't make sense if you say, go out, architect, get, keep these components in mind, and, you know, again, what direction do you give them as far as how big, on the space, what direction are you giving them from that? That's the clarity that we haven't nailed down.
Typically, when we go into a library planning project for a facility, one of the things that they'll start asking, the question is, well, okay, so programs are number three on your list. Tell us about the programs, telling us about what your program needs are, what kind of things have to happen there. Once they have an idea of what that program, to borrow a billing term, a program of the program is, now they can say, okay, in order to do that, you're going to have to have a room that is X amount of square feet. Because it's going, you're also going to have this many exits, and you're going to have to have this much stuff, right? That's typically the way when you go into the, this is the scope of what we're trying to accomplish, help us get to that square footage of buildings. In the library world, there is a whole host of things. There are people who will tell you that it's .3 square foot for every population you have in your service area. There are a number of things that an architect can use at their disposal to give you a more complete perspective of what that building's actually going to require to do the things that you say you want to do. Right now, what we have, and I know everybody asks us this question, so how many square feet you going to need? And we always say, well, this is what we have. The two problems with that are, this is what we have under the, under the situation that we currently have. It's unclear whether or not if we wanted, say, one of the things that we really care about is having all public services on a single floor, because there's a tremendous amount of efficiency, right? So to give you an example, in our current main situation, we have approximately 60,000 square feet of public space. When you take into the AV collection, the children's collection, and the collection, the adult collection downstairs. The building itself has only got, I think, 40,000 square foot per floor. So there's no real way without completely cutting a ton of collection to move everything down on that first floor in a renovation deal, right? So you'd have, you'd have to come up with some other, you either have to cut things down, or you wouldn't. And so that's where we go back to the data. And the data says that what our community really cares deeply about is those collections. So it would be really hard to say, okay, we're going to cut, you know, essentially 20,000 square foot of collection to put it onto that first floor in a renovating kind of a situation. I hope that makes sense.
The motion. Motion, Brian.
Motion made by Janie.
Could you repeat it, please?
I move that we go out ahead and let them go to an architect and get preliminary plans for a library. That way, we know what's required. Space, spacing, how much land we need, the parking, that's a big problem there, is parking and ADA access. Until we have an architect come in and put that stuff together, it's hard to move forward. You need that information.
Along with that, can we also include that we approve that the revitalization or the renovation of the library be made? With that stipulation.
Just amend the motion.
I'm asking.
I think they.
Your motion is about rebuild, not renovate. Is that right?
Right.
Sounds too separate a motion.
Yeah.
I can go with that.
I'm going for what the community has said. They want new space, new amenities, while honoring past. And that's what the community has asked, requested.
And you don't want to amend, and you refuse to amend your motion.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not amending it.
Okay.
She seconded the motion. Motion been made and second to her architect to look at the renovate, the rebuild of the main library. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Dr. Mather, since your team will be guiding that process, would you quickly remind the board what the steps are in engagement of an architect?
I'd be happy to do that. Actually, the public library has been involved with a minority architect, Mr. Garcia, Garcia Architectural Company in the past. He did the conceptual drawings that I think that you saw, or at least he did a portion of them. I think you might have engaged in two different architects. I think you might have engaged in two different architects. Since it is a service contract, we can, the public library can engage with that architect. I think that saves a little bit of steps for trying to re-engage, but that's one possibility. The second possibility is to put an RFQ out for an architectural firm.
Or do you have a preference? This wouldn't require action, just preference. What's your preference on the process used to engage the architect?
If I think back from the drawing from the last time, that, you know, when we, we had the, was that the same guy?
Conceptual drawings.
Garcia.
He was one of the architects you worked with, one, that's what I thought. Yeah, there's two of them.
There were two.
Mm-hmm.
That gave us drawings.
Okay. I like what I saw, so I, I don't see a problem with him.
So, just to clarify, we can go out to bid and solicit input, or we can proceed because no bidding is required for professional service with engaging the architect?
That's correct.
Your pleasure.
We should just go with Garcia.
That's the guidance we need.
Make that motion that we continue with Garcia Architectural Company in the service contract.
So move.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Please inform the community you did, that, took that action, so that there will not be any criticism. Thank you.
All right, board, now we're ready to delve deeper into the public library's budget. So, we ask that you accept a report and provide guidance on establishing the 2018-19 budget for the library as submitted by Ms. Levers.
Thought I'll just add some more slides, just to go over our funding overview, so that the board has an idea of how we, we get all the money. The USD 500 mil levy, we receive $7,890,000 from the Wyco Library Funding, and that's what the question was, we had on Tuesday. And the next slide will show you how we get to that amount. And of course, the Turner Library as well. And we do receive $47,000 from the state. That's a third of what we used to get from the state. Every year, they cut that, and I was surprised that this year, we still get some money. There are some libraries in the state of Kansas that don't get any more, because that's all they rely on in the state money. But that's what we worked with in the library. So, and I, I thought I'll go back and just kind of show the board the decision for the mil levy increase of four years ago, what impact it had on the homeowners. We, when we asked the board at that time to establish a capital fund, and we had, if a homeowner owns a $50,000 home, the increase in the year 2016, '17 was two cents increase for that homeowner, for a monthly, a monthly rate of $5.29. If you own a $100,000 home, the increase was five cents for $10.58 a month. And of course, $150,000 home was a seven cents increase, and it cost the homeowner $15.86 a month. And of course, a $200,000 home had a 10 cents increase, and the monthly impact was $21.15. Just to give the board, I remember when we first met, when the new board met, we had a package that I had all these information in, but I, I think maybe it's just better for me to bring it back, so that the board has an idea of where we come from and where we're going. And that was to establish the capital fund for them.
And Ms. Levers, again, just help, help me understand, you say two cents, but it's, let's say, a $100,000 house. $10 monthly?
Yes, ma'am.
Increase, so $126,90 will be on the tax statement.
Lump, yeah, lump sum.
And so, that same homeowner, now, did it stay that?
Yes.
So, so we're, this 2016, '17, where is it? It did, it did increase?
No.
So, 18, '19?
No.
That person is still paying $126,000.
Excuse me.
$126.
Correct.
$126 at the end of the year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
With one caveat that I need to add, if their assessed value has increased, that bill does not stay the same. So, that's something not in our control, but...
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Lane. Appreciate that. Let one is gone. Okay. I had another, and of course, it's the slide that we spoke about, and you had it last week, the bottom portion. Once we get something from the unified government or the Wyco Library Board, it's just letting the board know, that's the amount of money that they've collected on the board's behalf from the, what we call the PET District. It's Piper, Edwardsville, and Turner. And the $2 million comes from the Turner, Edwardsville area. Reason being?
Piper.
Yeah, Piper, Edwardsville. Did I say Turner? I apologize. Turner is the $300,000. And that's the slide that I admitted, I apologize. But whenever we get something from the Wyco, letting you know that is what you need to, what you have to expect, them sending us for our services to these areas. Nothing to do with charging us any money. And they just want to know that the board accepted that, and know. So, in case it doesn't come, then you can say, "Hey, you know, first of, in May, you said this is what we're going to receive. We haven't received it yet." Something. Thank you. So, the vision of the library is leading the way in reading information and culture. Our mission, connecting members of a dynamic community with information, tools, resources, and welcoming spaces to enrich their lives. We have five values driven for the future. And the five are excellence in public services and innovation in service delivery. The second was intellectual freedom and patron privacy. The third one is community partnership, and then embracing diversity. And the fifth one is valuing them and empowering employees. And we're going to repeat this a couple of times, just to see how we took action. Values to action, the excellence in public service and innovation in service delivery. We would like to be a million circulation library. We planned, or we did create a master facilities plan to support future library services. Create access to technology to support patron experience in the library. Increase services to people who can come to library buildings. The second one, again, is intellectual freedom and patron privacy. We increase access to library resources to move user groups, and increase private options for patrons using library resources. In our community partnership, we develop community partnerships in defined areas. Sorry. Embrace diversity. Demographics of the entire Wyandotte County reflected in our allocation of library resources, collections, and our staff. We want to value and empowering employee, and that means increased technological support for day-to-day service providers. We want 100% of our staff needs to participate in job-specific training every year. We also want that full-time staff serve on at least one system committee and one team committee for at least one term over the next four years. Key achievements. Again, our excellence in public service and innovation in service delivery. We said we plan to be a million circ. In nine, in the year 16, '17, we almost reached that. We had 10,021 people more coming to the library. We would have reached that. We reached 989,000, 900, 989,000.
Almost a million.
Almost a million. Sorry. Great, yeah. So, our second, under the excellence in public service innovation, we created a master facilities plan to support future library. You've seen Ethel Schlegel being renovated. You've seen West being renovated. And of course, now, we're stepping a little bit nearer to our main library. Increase access to technology to support patron experience in the library. We have more mobile devices available for patrons. We have refurbished, not refurbished, but we put brand-new laptops and extra laptops in all our libraries. Increase services to people who can come to the library buildings. We've increased non-traditional circulation channels. And that... I got a little free. We have, as you know, the Little Free Libraries, the mobile libraries. We have Dykes KU Library. We have text to check out, and that's when you get, you get there and you can just lift a book up and text that barcode, and that will check that book out to you without even coming to the library. And then, you check it back in once you bring it back, and that's at the Dykes Library, KU Library. We want to meet the patrons where they are. We can't expect, as I said before, to have people come to the library anymore. There are people who don't want to come to the library, but we need to take the libraries to them. Intellectual freedom and patron privacy. We have changed the late fees as more equitable to new kids. There are a lot of parents who don't, I don't know, if they don't care, they don't come with their kids to the library, and some, some kids need the signature of a parent to apply for a library card. It's for years we can't not serve the kid. The kid wants to come to the libraries. Kids wants to check out books. If we don't get the parent to sign for those books, we at least check, we at least give that kid an option to check out two items out of the library. You know, if it gets lost, two items is better than 10 items from the, but at least the kid has the opportunity to check something out of the library. And we also stopped, we don't have fines for those kids anymore. Intellectual freedom and patron privacy, well, sorry, we did that. Increase privacy for patrons using our library resources. We have, we better inform our patrons what information is being kept. Continuation of our achievements, our community partnership. We developed a community partnership in defined areas. And we established formal partnership with a checklist form and evaluation tool. Our bracing, embracing diversity, we, the demographics of the entire Wyandotte County reflected in allocation of library resources, our collections, and staff. We redraw the service areas. If you remember, Armadale was part of the main library area. We have changed, Armadale is not part of the main library anymore, but of, of South Library. So, they can better serve them, because they kind of close to that, and Maine is reaching out further to the north. Valuing and empowering our employees, we've launched a new internet for employees. 100% of staff will participate in job-specific training every year. Increase in time and type of staff development across the board. Repeating that, it's not. So, now, we are, we're going to target our library spending. Right in front of you is the planned strategic allocation. As you, it's a little bit small on the screen, but if you open up on your screen, embracing diversity, the first three lines, allocations of library services, that's the underserved, demos, translation software, growing our own. If you remember a couple of months, well, I don't think it's a couple of months, I think it's a month and a half ago, we had the dean of ESU come and visit and talk to you. And that is what we've initially just put in our budget, if, if it's the board's prerogative that we can go ahead with growing our own. Then, you see excellence in public service goes right down. We, we need to do homebound delivery, book subscription program, increase streaming services. We need a mobile application. We also added in the master's facilities plan, money for the architects if, that the board just voted on. South needs a lightning and upholstery fixed. West needs furniture after they've done the renovations. You can see that the furniture, after 35 years, needs some TLC as well. Our extension services, that's the department that does the delivery. The van has seen its days. We need to get a new van. We need a library card signup push, where we go out to daycares and assisted livings and places like that to do that. We've, going to establish a winter reading program, that's for adults as well. And then, we need a microphone reader. Lot of people are requesting that, and ours have seen its days. We need a digitize, for digitization, at main, a scanner. People keep, keep on asking, "Can you scan things?" We don't have that. And also faxing services. We keep on having to buy or replenish our library cards, and we, we need to do bidding to replace self-check solution. That has seen its days, I guess. And then, we need new people counters. You know, as people come in at the doors, there's counters within the, the door counters, letting us know how many people came in to visit the library. So, we need new counter machines for that. We also would like to invest in paperless registration. We need a training tracking tool for staff, and of course, training for staff as well. We need scheduling software, and that is going to be, sorry, the planned strategic allocation.
Ms. Levers, let me just ask clarification. For the people counters, is this for all three libraries, or one?
Or five.
Or five?
Four. Well, yeah, five, because of Turner, we do keep track of the counters in Turner. The reason that that's in there is currently, the solution we have for self-checks is also tied into the solution we have for people counters. And so, when you're going out to, to look at one, you're likely going to put both on the table.
Okay, so that's essentially $125,000.
Possibly, that's the top end.
Right. So, these are, these are top-end estimates?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Because the training is, is that nailed down, or is that just, again, what you see that your people would need?
Need for the year, yes. We, we normally bring one person in to train all, or train the trainers, instead of having to send people to, for training, which is more expensive.
So, if approved, the growing our own, when would that first semester, would that go into fall?
January.
So, be spring semester?
Yes, spring semester.
And they had everything nailed down? He was a little, when he made his presentation, was a little...
We have not, yes, but we haven't nailed it down, because we, we wanted to introduce that to the board, to see whether that will be a viable option. And then, now, once we know it is okay, then we can go back and now...
So, you can come back and see how it works?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Why is it jumping back? Okay, so basically, that will be the budget for the board for 2018.
The changes, you mean, the changes in your budget, Ms. Levers?
The changes were the materials and...
No, I don't need you to go over them again, but those are the changes that you're representing in this budget.
No changes.
What you just went over were the changes that you're representing?
Oh, I apologize, yes.
Yeah, because you said it was the budget. I don't want to confuse, the full budget is on a different attachment, right?
Different page. You're right.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I don't know that it's related to the budgeting, but, and perhaps you can answer, whether ADA standards really incorporate accommodations for the blind? standards really incorporate accommodations for the blind?
I'm going to turn to counsel here for a minute. I think, I don't know, generally speaking, ADA standards apply to any protected group. In terms of the blind and specifics, I am, I don't know that just because we have a visually impaired person, that we absolutely have to have a building that completely functions for a visually impaired person. Because I know it doesn't work that way in the deaf community, because we, many libraries end up, we've been around a lot of deaf communities, so I know that we, we usually have to provide some, accommodation in terms of working with that group, but that's something we can certainly get back to you with.
Frankly, it's one of the things that if you're looking at building a new facility, you'll want to work with the architects to develop and make sure it's ADA compliant, which would include accommodations and access, it's really an accessibility issue more than it is an accommodation issue, as it relates to the physical structure of the library. But as far as programming and things of that nature go, then you do have to worry about accommodations for all members, to include people who have hearing impairments, visual impairments, whether it's legally blind or something else.
Thank you.
So Ms. Levers, the 897-500, what category does that go into here? Or Mr. Hanson?
It'll depend. If you look at throughout those things, things that would be, capital expenditures would be in the equipment line, things that were, if you look at that training and tracking software, that will go in the, which one is it? It's the data, yeah, data processing line. Some of the things, I'm trying to think if we have...
Professional services is actually a capital...
Professional services would be, that's one of the reasons why the professional services lines was so high, because of the architect piece. So it goes in to many different levels here. The reason we broke that out is just so you would understand, we want to spend money based on the strategic ideas, and so, they would go, if, we can certainly tell you which group they come from, but, yeah, they're just all across.
How they fit together. And while you're there, you know, the, look at, explain the, explain 2% personnel, that's salaries, right?
Cost of living, yes.
Okay, because you, you gave us before salary schedule, but is it in this presentation this year?
Last year.
Is it, as I say, is it in this year?
Salary schedules will come before the Board at the next regular Board meeting for all your employees, including the library.
Okay, but last year, you gave us a breakout, because I think you were trying to get them up to market level, okay, so...
And it was kind of five, remember, then you said we'll bring it three, which we...
Like a 5%? 6%?
Yeah, it's six, but remember, you were the one that said, no, why don't we break it up in half?
Right, it's easier to understand.
Which we did, exactly, so that's what we did.
So this year, you're suggesting a 2%?
Yeah.
And explain, 2% of employee benefits, how does that increase?
The amount?
Uh huh, if it's 2% increase, what, where do you, where do you see the, do I get more health insurance? Do I get more what? How do you increase the employee benefits? How's that sift out?
I will ask the...
Dr. Nguyen, it will sift out through increased insurance, health insurance cost, you'll see that increase, it was a 5% increase overall, so depending on the number of employees, you'll see a percent increase. Also, your FICA will be increased based on your base salary, so if you have a little bit increase in your base salary, then your social security will go up slightly.
Okay.
My best explanation is, don't compare the two and two, the employee benefits are always separate, so the increases are all at the Board's discretion. So, no matter who the group is, if it's a teachers' group and you're negotiating, that's at the Board's determination and discretion, as well as a classified staff and library. Library are all part of the Board's employees, so whatever the Board's decision is in regards to an increase, you would look at the personnel line item as the increase. The benefits are going to increase automatically if you give a base increase in your salaries, and/or if there's health insurance increases. Your certified staff and your classified staff would be separate, so you're accurate in that response. Typically, that's what's been the case, you provided a 2% increase for your classified staff. And then, I believe this is why Mrs. Levers is recommending the 2% to you as well for the library staff. I think it is consistent in the 2% base salary increase, there's consistency, but that's what I'm saying, I would recommend that you not combine your benefit package with your salary here, although it is part of compensation, so I hate to minimize that. But when we talk about a 2% increase in salary, it's only the salary, it's the first line on her budget sheet, personnel. 2% of the benefits will also, her line item has to increase on the benefit line as well, because there will be increases there, but it's not the total salary increase. Yep, they'll get, yeah, it will actually be whatever the total health insurance increase is, which is about 5%, but it'll be across the board, so that will be averaged out in the total line item. And then, of course, whatever the total salary dollar was for the increases, you'd have a percent increase in your benefits as well. It is equal for both. Has to be. No, no, it's a good question.
You have the guidance you need, Ms. Levers?
That's it.
You need a motion?
No, your Board will actually approve this budget when you approve the overall budget for the entire school district library combined, so...
There's one slide you didn't explain.
One slide? Which one?
It's titled Casey Budget.
Which one?
Your broad category, the broken-out budget. It's outside of your PowerPoint.
Mr. Numbers up there.
The overall budget. Blue and white chart.
Little bitty numbers.
This is the detailed budget, Dr. Nguyen?
And Board?
And Board, I apologize.
That's okay.
So this is, it gives you by department, library admin, the mobile library, and ILL, Interlibrary Loan Department, Technical Services, we have the Collections Department, Programming and Marketing, we have Information Tech, the main library, West Wyandotte Library, Ethel Schlegel Library, South Library, and that's the budget for last year and this year, just to give you the whole.
Ms. Levers, would you make a hard copy of that for the Board? Because online, it's extremely difficult to read the chart.
We got it, but we can't see it.
Okay. We'll do that.
Yeah, you can, right.
For those who prefer paper, please, if you'd make a hard copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Okay. And can I do a full disclosure for, on you two?
On me?
Uh huh.
What did I do?
That we've known each other 100 years. And Ms. Levers was one of my students, 100 years ago. Oh, my.
So what does that make me? A dinosaur.
Okay, we're going, we're going to move on with that one.
Good job, good job.
All right, we're going on to the next executive session. I need a motion for the Board to recess into the Executive Session Act. About 1:25, 1:30? Need a break? 1:30? Discuss matters which would be deemed privileged to the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The Board will return to regular session at, how much grid? 10 to, 1:50.
So move. Second.
Motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, so ordered. Thank you.